It was thirty, two thirty maybe?
I know. Yeah, I'm afraid to look.
Probably just a schedule.
I didn't tell you it's on. I didn't want to.
Well, the problem is he's not one of them.
Schedule up there? All right, they were right here. Cause you couldn't hit the door on the wall. Hi. You see them, huh?
Ryan, good, how are you doing?
My camera? Oh, I thought you were doing it with what is that? What am I taking a picture of?
How are you doing?
You save this?
We should have brought in my dad.
Okay, if we can get going here, we appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Good to see a full crowd. First thing we'll go with on the agenda is the prayer. And that will be offered by Isaac Webster. And then after that, we will have the pledge, which will be given by Carter Wirtman. So, Isaac, if we can have you come up there. Carter, can I come up there?
Dear only Father, we're thankful for this day. We're thankful that we can be here today to discuss the, to, to listen to the city council, fill in what they have to say, and try to resolve some problems. We're thankful that we can all be here and have come here safely. And please, please bless that we can all go home safely and that we can have a good meeting. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen. Please repeat the word of allegiance with me.
Our flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I appreciate the scouts and all of their help and we like to have them come. They take a lot of, if they don't come and do the pledge and the prayers, then I have to give it to one of these guys and they keep telling me they don't want to do it. So, we do appreciate you guys coming. Okay, first thing on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, which is the approval of the January twentieth city council minutes. Do we have a motion or a discussion?
I have a discussion on that. The attendance, it shows all the old city council attendance.
Okay. Thanks. So, we have that. Do you want to make a motion to pass it with that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion if we pass the consent agenda with the changes.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next thing is the public forum. And before we get to that point, Linda is out for the month. She's out on vacation, so we will excuse her. We've got our youth council mayor here sitting with me, so she's kind of replaced Linda, I guess, for a bit. So, we'll open it up to public forum. If you'd like to speak to the council, myself, please come to the microphone, state your name, and what you're here about, and we'll keep it three minutes.
I don't know when you start your clock, mayor, so I'll start talking now.
Well, you better hurry.
I'm hurrying. I, in consideration, I did write it so that maybe that can go a little bit quicker. My name is Brad York. I am a lifelong resident here in town, and I appreciate the opportunity to appear before the mayor council. Mayor, typically the residents of Utah are protected against unreasonable utility rates by the Public Service Commission. Can you imagine what we'd pay for services such as natural gas and other necessary utilities if these companies that have a monopoly could charge anything they desired for these services? In Utah, the Public Service Commission does not oversee public utilities. I wonder why. There are several reasons, but primarily, public utilities were exempt because we're not originally intended to generate a fee that exceeded the cost to deliver that utility. As consumers, we are then left to reply upon you, our elected officials, to be our Public Service Commission. I, as well as many others within Payson, do not feel we're being treated fairly with regards to the rates we're being charged for these necessary utilities. I've met with the city on several occasions, and we continue to be charged rates that are excessive. I provided documentation that compared Payson City to other communities. This documentation clearly showed our rates to be, almost without exception, the highest in the state for electricity. This places an unfair burden on the back of those who live here. It can also create a situation that discourages economic development. During my research, I found many interesting things. I kind of laughed when I found the original documentation for the creation of Payson Power. Among other things, they registered themselves as not-for-profit. Obviously, things have changed. As I review the budget documents for Payson City, it appears the city increased their budget, and then they placed the burden of funding their expenditures back to Ron Trump and electrical customers at Payson City. I've listed the transfers from the electrical department into the general fund for the past ten years. I've copies for anyone who is interested. You'll see a trend that concerns me. I'm left to wonder how to correct this. There are several options available for the citizens of Payson. Obviously, I'm here again with hopes tonight the city will address it and make it more equitable. This practice needs to stop. It is unfair for the residents, and again, it discourages economic development. I know there is discussion regarding our utility rates and property taxes tonight. I have completed a comparison, and it is true that we are below the average property rate for Utah County. We are number six out of twenty-four, twenty-five cities. Our latest census indicates the average valuable home in Payson to be just over one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. When I use that figure, the people of Payson pay about fifty-five dollars less on, well, actually it's fifty-two dollars less on their property tax when compared to the average rate for the entire county. In the past, I've been told I should be happily happy that I'm only paying a little more for utilities than I would if I raised property taxes to a fair rate. Honestly, I don't feel I'm getting a very good value. I suspect that fifty-two dollars only covers about a month or two of the overage I'm being charged for utilities. Regardless, if I was going to pay the extra, I'd prefer it be on my property taxes. You might ask why? There's a couple of reasons. I can fully deduct the property taxes on my income tax, can't deduct my utility bills. And also, it's much more difficult for you to raise property tax than it is for you to raise my utility rates. Last of all, we saw an interesting thing occur in Payson. I don't recall seeing this before. We had three incumbent council people eliminated in the primary election. These were good people, but the people of Payson were sending a message. They are not happy with the general direction of the city. They elected new people in hopes I've seen some changes. In reality, they were likely voting more against the administration of Payson City than they were against these three people. They want things done different. As I'm sure you are aware, there has been a lot of discussion regarding Payson City on Facebook. In addition to the notes you can read, I'm amazed at the people who have reached out in person to relay their concerns. It seems I cannot go anywhere without someone, often a stranger, stopping to encourage me and offer suggestions. Not all of what's going on is bad. I think there are some good things happening. I suspect Payson City views me as the enemy. In reality, I'm really not. I am just strongly, I just feel strongly the current policy is wrong and unfair. I want to make a difference and help those who cannot do this for themselves. I'm not one that complains about a situation but also having a solution. When I review the budget situation for Payson City, it is obvious to me they are very similar to the federal government. They are on a path that isn't sustainable. There are going to need to be difficult questions answered and actions taken. The deeper this hole is dug, the more difficult it will be to get out. I'm encouraging our council to do, just do the right thing. It only takes three votes to roll things back to a fair rate. I wish I had more time. I see you're also going to discuss council goals and plans for next year. I have some suggestions, but maybe I can just discuss them online or return to a future public forum. In closing, I thank you for listening, and I'll be more than thankful for your action. Before I leave, I do have one question. I have often mentioned the Utah State Supreme Court, Walker versus Brigham City. As I read that case, it clearly states the city is allowed to charge a reasonable rate for electricity. They then define reasonable. If my survey is correct, excuse me, and Payson does charge a higher rate, where am I incorrect in stating that Payson City is in violation of that ruling? I thank you for your time, and I really thank you for your additional time.
I believe the afterward, we are having a, is the work session on the budget? Yeah, so, if you want to wait till the end, we will, we have a work session.
You know, mayor, I welcome the invitation, but I wouldn't be able to sat through it without wanting to offer my opinion, so probably best for all of us if I don't stick around. Additionally, I just got home from open-heart surgery, and probably the stress wouldn't be...
Well, we don't want you going down in here.
Well, I don't know.
I'd have to give your mouth to mouth.
You know, maybe I'll vote on who likes seeing me go down, who wouldn't?
Maybe we can take odds on it, huh?
There you go, thanks.
Thanks. Or is there anybody else who would like to address the mayor council? Okay. Seeing none? Do we have a motion to, well, we'll just go ahead and close the public forum. Next thing on the agenda is the council and staff reports. Do we have any staff?
Mayor, city council, citizens, just an update of the, what's been going on in the police department. Just to wrap up of January, the month of January, we had ninety arrests, a hundred and forty-eight offenses, two hundred and fourteen citations, which is over the two hundred and ninety-five violations. Just about a thousand calls for service, three DUI arrests, three hundred traffic stops, and thirty-seven traffic accidents. So, our traffic accidents are a little bit elevated still because of the way the month, but it has gone down a few since people started getting used to the winter driving. So, we're hoping as the storms continue to roll in, which we need, that people use caution. And we only had, I think, four accidents this last snowstorm, which is a pretty good snowstorm. So, I applaud the public for taking extra time to, to watch out, to be a little bit safer. Also, we just had a Nova graduation for Taylor Elementary about fifteen, twenty minutes ago. And I want to again thank the mayor for coming and helping us out with that, and also for the city council and the city manager for giving us the funds to have school programs such as the Nova program. I think it's a great thing for our students and for our communities, so. I don't know if there's any other questions.
Any comments, any discussion? Thank you.
Mayor and council, just to give you a little update for the annuals and the fire departments. It's been a busy week or so. We had our paging system that we paged from central dispatch go down last Wednesday. And so, we've had demand at our station for twenty-four seven the last five days. As the calls come in, they reland us and then we page them out. The link went down over on their end, and as we tried to get that repaired, maybe we were the problems thinking we had it fixed, and it'd go down again. And finally, we, with the assistance of Ucan, came down, and some of those guys were familiar with the paging system according to we have, and were able to get the system back up and running along with, we've gotten a grant for a microwave system instead of having phone lines to the station from dispatch. Forever, we've had two, what we call dry lines that we run that are connected from the dispatch building to our station. And with the harmonics and EBA, there's been some problems with that. With this grant, it has been installed with the microwave system from our station to West Mountain, but for some reason, they have never ever completed the project from West Mountain to Spanish Fork. So, while we were down, they were able to find that equipment located in the county and implement that microwave system. So, now we have a direct contact from our dispatch center to our station. Also, everybody else is paged off of Lake Mountain in Utah County. Our problem is, is West Mountain blocks part of that signal, and so are our personnel. And law enforcement don't get full coverage. So, that's why we page out of our location at our station. So, that's back up and working. We did have a few people who were working their days and nights covering those calls and getting those paged out. So, that was a fun challenge. Again, we had an interesting call today, Spanish Fork, and it was part of a patient in from Saffin, Spanish Fork. Been involved with at first what they thought was hazardous chemical. And so, we went out there to take care of a hazmat situation to help decon those personnel. And after we got, going through the call, we got more information that a patient had a little bit of contact with the chemical but hadn't been in it or fallen in it as we had first reported. We were setting up some decon stations to decon the patients before they could even go in the hospital. But luckily, we were able to take care of the one patient and not the rest of the personnel there. So, that turned out really good. So, things are going good. Our cert class is still going strong, and we have still a lot of calls going on for January. We had a hundred and sixty-one medical calls and thirty-six fire calls, so still standing.
On that, of the hospital, did you have to set up tents outside or what?
We got called a little bit into it. They'd set up a little can of campers and plastic around it. We had called, I had ordered in the decon trailer, that's a county-wide unit. That way, we can run people through the trailer. It's heat, it's self-contained, and you run them from start to finish, and by the time they come out, they're in tight ex suit and all plate. But as we got more information, we canceled the trailer because there wasn't enough animation to worry about deconning the rest of the people. So, it worked out pretty good, especially this time of year with cold weather. It was a fun challenge. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor and council and public, I just wanted to report a little bit on our recreation programs. We did just finish up our youth skiing program with Sundance for the month of January. Thirty-four students participated in that. Went well, just had one small injury where we had a small cut, so that was pretty good, skiing for the first time. We are starting a new session for tumbling. We have quite a few that do that, but in March, we'll launch a new session for our youth tumbling classes. And this next two weeks, we're having thirty-eight teams with women's volleyball, a tournament that we're doing over the next two weeks at Mount Mebo Junior High. Also, I wanted to report at the Petit Nee, we met, we had a board meeting last Wednesday night. And through that year, with the people preserving Petit Nee, there's been over five thousand six hundred and sixty-six hours, volunteer hours for the hosts there, and there's been sixty thousand visitors that have come through the buildings through the year that they've counted. Also, to report, I've reported to Dave, but also a snow removal question came up regarding the ball fields on Eight South. And those are on the schedule, wants to remove that snow. And that did take place Monday, probably mid-morning, probably not before school, but it snowed, of course, all morning. So, that was done and is done now. Thank you.
I just have a question on that snow removal on Eight South. Where we know kids are coming to school in the morning, can we move that up as a priority? Is, like, what's the...
Wrong department. I'll address that.
You'll address, okay.
I, you just talked about, sorry.
Yep. Mayor and council, I'll get right into the snow removal. Yes, we can move that up. Matter of fact, I know that Councilman Phillips was out helping us this week. When we took on this project, we said that, you know, it's going to be kind of a trial there. So, what we've come up with just in the last couple of days is we're going to do an on-call system, so we'll have pre-employees. We've been a little unlucky with the amount of snow getting in on a Saturday or a Sunday. One thing I do want to let everyone know...